All right, well, we're back. We had an executive session upstairs about police employment. Now that we've sort of already done the pledge and we can move right on to the beautification committees. So who wants to come up and speak on behalf of the beautification committee? But feel free to join us up here.
There's more of us.
That's right.
This is us.
Yeah, it's your, it's your power or stuff.
Really?
Or whatever you'd like to use.
Oh, we don't do the...
You can do the pledge.
We did. We did it at the six thirty meeting.
Oh, all right.
So where do we have the floor of the agenda for tonight?
Well, I'm Ann Myers.
I'm Rita Milo.
Going around. Renee Thomas. There's Mary Nitzwicky. Some of our support there. And...
Why don't you stand up and introduce yourself?
I'm Renee Mary. Part again. Part again. What against Torini Campbell to grow. Mary Nitzwicky.
Mary Nitzwicky, 140 North Fourth Way.
Cindy Link, Lewis Road.
Renee Thomas, West Honeyside Lane.
Rita Milo, Meadow Brook Road.
And Ann Myers for the place. And we have at least probably another half dozen.
Oh, yeah. That couldn't make it to that.
At least, but not more than that.
Right, yeah, right.
It couldn't be higher.
Our committee is twelve, thirteen tops. As if everyone shows up.
Okay.
So...
Huh?
With their shovels.
With their shovels.
If I might start and you can interrupt me. I want to give a brief introduction. To say that we are almost thirty years old. We started in nineteen ninety, ninety-one. Proposal was a joint project of the Garden Club of Burlington and Hudson Valley Garden Club. Sadly, those representatives passed on. But it is, it is evolved into a solid group of volunteers. Passionate, devoted, hardworking. And self-sufficient, I might say. We, at the beginning, and it's true today, our focus has always been the beautification of Main Street. We've done a variety of projects. Our main project at the beginning and still now are the flower boxes along Main Street and the containers. However, over our history, we have done things with the assistance of the village and particularly the rec department from the head of Main Street through to waterfront park. And I'll just point out a few of those things. We've done some planting at Main Street. We've directed village employees in terms of the maintenance of that barrier along Broadway. I don't know what we call it, but we've done different things. We run the water down or the Bennys, I guess. If you will.
Bennys.
We've done some small plantings and village triangles. We've maintained or helped to maintain the War Memorial area that's now been re-lanched. Rita, in particular, is devoted to maintaining the ambulance door.
Oh, good.
And the box there. We've worked at Village Hall. One of our bigger projects several years ago, which I think was quite successful, is we worked with the village to divide the large grasses in waterfront park.
And Mark was part of our group at that point. He did a lot of shovel work.
Overgrown or too large, they had to be divided. And so we worked with the assistance of the village to replant them along the fence. So in, in most every season, it's spectacular this way. That protects them.
We did that several times.
Yeah.
Directly, yeah.
You know, as part of our greening, we have done the wreaths. We make our own bows. We secure our bows so we can use them at least two or three years at a time. We just don't jam the sun for the most part. We do the arts station at least until last year or two. And...
The squags?
We, so we, we basically have done and do now three plantings of the boxes and the containers and the greening of those containers and boxes and wreaths. I would say that we get, let me just say that we do the purchasing. We do the selection. We do the transport. We don't ask for village help to pick up the plants. However, we get incredible support and assistance from the rec department. And we are fully appreciative of that, or you are, Joe.
Who's you? You live.
In more ways than one. So just to summarize that introduction, the lessons we've learned as we operate as a committee under the rec department. And I would like to say that our success is due to our passionate, committed volunteers. They are loyal, they are hardworking, they're there. We get incredible support from the rec department and from the village with Joe's assistance. I think that we've learned that we know the village has limitations in terms of budget and in terms of their manpower, just as we have limitations in terms. So when we, there are lots of things we would like to do, but those are our limitations. I mean, we're busy people, getting older, I'd hate to say. And so we're, we're reluctant to take on too much, but that is a kind of a guideline for us. Just to complete the summary, the biggest problems, and I'm sure you'll appreciate this, are maintenance and watering. And we've tried various things over the years with regard to the War Memorial. We actually put in round watering with legal hose on a timer. It was very successful. I don't know what you could do now. With regard to the boxes, early on, probably you and I and others would carry twenty gallons of water in our car and go around and try and water. But then, that'll very quickly. We've tried to work with the shopkeepers. We've tried to educate the shopkeepers. We even gave them a watering can.
Oh, one near on the table.
Decorated.
Water me. I am drying.
That was another year.
All the ones right.
But sometimes that's successful, sometimes that's not. I think maybe it's, the conclusion from that is bit sad, but, you know, we get minimal support from the shopkeepers. And minimal support from the community. Community mate. I think why we do this is, I'll speak for myself, which you can say, is because I think the community appreciates what we do. I love flowers, I love color, I think it enhances the village, and that's why we do it. I think other people get that same satisfaction from them, but they don't make that transition to what will happen. So we're here tonight to address primarily three issues that were contained in a memo or an email that we sent about a year ago to you. Really, in the context of all the Main Street improvements that have been making place, which, which are wonderful. And it's, it's very exciting to see both the landscape and, and everything. But there were other things that we do that should be, should be coordinated with that. And we've, so we wrote a memo thinking that our proposals would further enhance that project in the beautification of Main Street. And three aspects of that were evaluation of the Christmas wreaths. Evaluation of the state of the window boxes and, and the needs there. And also the consideration of adding containers along, particularly along Main Street, maybe at various locations, but particularly along Main Street. So wonder what you've seen in Dostre and Terrytown and Elmsford. They took that initiative two, three years ago. They approved containers. And how they, I know, how they maintain them, I don't know, but they've been a lovely addition. And it was something, we've, we've had the barrels. I would like to say that most of our, most, the majority of our boxes and whiskey barrels, how many are almost thirty years old?
Most of them are gone. They've had to go on.
Yeah, have fallen apart. Some of our boxes have fallen apart. We continue, and because I think you probably will understand that there's, there's a desire to have this. Even when the box has fallen off the wall of the store, they'll put the liner out there and will plant it or they'll put their own containers. So I think there is a desire for all of this. And so this is, again, why we're presenting this. You want to say anything now or do you want to do the wreaths?
No, well, just as a side thing, as one person seeing the work being done in town, that the new area at the top of Main Street is, I think, wonderful and it looks very nice. So it's, it's very encouraging to see that kind of work being done in the village. I know that was part of the master plan that started three years ago. And that's great, so I just wanted to put that in there. Yeah, we, a lot of our window boxes have been taken down by people. Now the, okay, and this we're going to see, the two yellow and blue paint colors that are on the liquor store and Revenge. And where did it come from with all the historic district and hardly controlling that? What happened there?
We don't control paint colors at all. Those would be specifically said we'll never control paint.
We never control paint colors, so they can put up anything they want.
Correct. The way that the historical committee said is, paint doesn't affect historical value, because you can paint right over it. You change your window, you change the door.
Okay, so that's, they have...
So that's the answer. Because to me, I don't want to, I don't want to have a color committee that's going to say, my blue is not here for me.
Yeah, okay. That's the answer, all right. They did take down their window boxes, which were falling apart anyway, but, you know...
I just haven't seen any work going on, to be honest.
Yes, yeah. And I don't know what they're doing with the rest of it, but, okay. But a lot of our window boxes have been taken down or fallen apart, so we do need to replace a lot of them.
You want to give a little bit of history to the window boxes? Originally, there was a, Joe, can you remember the name of the employee? Wonderful guy.
Tom Murphy.
Who built the window.
Oh, Tom Murphy.
Tom Murphy. Built the original window boxes, probably at least three dozen, and installed. They were made of cedar, we bought the liners. And it was just a wonderful collaboration between the garden club and the committee that was forming in the village. And again, one by one, for various reasons, some of these, you know, disappeared.
Disappeared or taken down.
There have been a few instances where we replaced, I don't know the, the history of the post office for those were replaced.
We did replace those.
Okay, okay.
We had those built and you guys took care of them.
The rec department, yes, had some of them built them. And consulted with me about what we wanted, what we needed, and that was done and they were put up. Yeah. Well, generally, I would say that I think there's still a demand for that. You can be official, but it offers something, we feel it does. So I think in terms of the window boxes, as part of this proposal, we think we need to do a study, see where the need is in terms of desire to have it and replacement of those in addition to making new ones. And do an inventory and a plan perfectly for, or hopefully for constructing new boxes of durable wood, either cedar or redwood. Some of the, some of the liners probably will still be durable, others will have to be replaced. But it's, it's a project, you know, it's the traditional, original project that we feel needs reconsideration and support from the village. So that's one aspect. Why don't we go to the containers and then we'll come to the wreaths.
Yes.
Again, the whiskey barrels, I don't know, we probably had probably at least a dozen of them that we had been planting over this period of time. And one by one, they declined and we removed them. But I think that, and maybe even in fact, part of the plaza at the War Memorial, I don't remember, but I attended some of those meetings, they had the vision of having some containers or, you know, three containers we kept. It has to be obvious, obviously, to the, to the space. But generally, I think we feel that it would be a nice addition. We would be willing to plant it. I think we probably need to discuss the maintenance of it, that's another issue. But I think it, it goes part and parcel with what you're doing, all of the enhancements along Main Street. And bringing the flowers down to areas that don't have the commercial property to have a window box. And just as we, at the head of Main Street, we had added these two planters. But, so we would like for you to consider, just as the other villages have done, consider containers. I mean, we're talking really eighteen, twenty-four, probably inch diameter.
They are large, large planters.
Yeah.
Weather resistant, obviously.
They can be terracotta, they could be fiberglass.
Fiberglass.
It could be wood, we could look into that, it could be metal. Fiberglass, some, some fiberglass is better than others, lighter. Because we green the containers, fiberglass is not going to hold up as long if you keep them out during winter. But, but then again, we have, we do green the containers, so that could be a decision whether you take them into the winter and then you bring them out for, for the other season. So that's another issue. But that is one, our second request. And kind of part and parcel of all that, and one thing that's always been asked for, and for various reasons we understand, never been satisfied, is assistance watering. Terrytown has a pickup truck with a tank and roll up. They go by probably every decade. Now they water their containers, their containers are fairly new. They have hanging plants, Dostre has the hanging plants, we don't have hanging plants. I mean, they, they absolutely need that watering. It would be much less the job to maintain these containers. But nevertheless, I think, I don't know the expense, but we've always felt that some watering facility, some assistance, the guaranteeing that you would have.
Not just for the barrels, but some for the window boxes.
Right.
Because people don't...
On land, it's that one.
You see, what's happened in town now is we have a lot of sweet potato vines because they're very, very drought resistant and if they're not watering enough, the other plants sort of go away and the sweet potato takes over. So we are covered with sweet potato vine. But it'd be nice to see the other flowers color in there too, but they're not watered. And I go around with buckets with ten gallon things in the back of my car and try to water certain places at the top of Main Street, which I was away for two weeks at the end of the summer. So there were problems like that. And it shouldn't be our job to carry, I'm out there and keep watering the, I watered the post office when they were on vacation. But to have some kind of consistent watering, because unfortunately, people forget, they're away. People move, people who run the stores, they change. And someone loves the flowers, they water them, the next year someone else comes in and goes, what? Flowers, where are there flowers here? And they're like, so, and you can't just keep going in and yelling at people, it's not good, they don't like it.
Try and say hello, we're from the beautiful...
We have been in there. We've left little things in them saying, please water me, all kinds of things.
Okay, I was going to point out, because I think about this and we've talked about this before, but, you know, a couple of things, one, a tank can be put in the back of a pickup truck, just for the season and then removed. So the truck isn't out, isn't just a watering truck, you know?
Right.
It could be joint use. But now we have things like the newly planted War Memorial that needs to be maintained.
Yes.
And all that happens when it doesn't get flooded correctly.
I'm amazed.
And how is it maintained?
Last August, a year ago.
And we have all the new trees going in, in the tree wells. And, you know, those, we've had a very wet summer for the most part.
So it keeps them alive.
Yeah, but as soon as you get into a dry phase, if you don't have watering of those kinds of acids, they're going to be dead, then, you know, a mo.
Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance.
Right. It's something that has to be looked at. And it seems to me that, I mean, I'm just going to say it, it seems to me that you're not necessarily looking at a full-time job, but you're looking at a seasonal help type of environment, which could come, someone could come in and do the watering and then...
I'm not even sure if it needs to be separate seasonal help. We might be able, help, we might be able to figure out a way to, you know, adjust the shift or adjust the work shift to come down and assist in the watering.
But that doesn't happen in the past.
How long we look at it, it would be cast.
Well, we're probably not going to have the option of any messes because of our wires and everything. I don't know what's planned off the, whether it's going to happen, but in any case, that would be lovely. So I think in terms of the container, the additional, and even with the boxes, the additional time involved would be somewhat limited. Anybody want to add anything?
Boxes to be like in corners or where would you see?
Probably grouped in certain corners, probably, yeah. We really didn't specify which ones. Would be nice to put them at the new, what's it called out there? Okay, the War Memorial, heart there, would be nice to have. I mean, for sure, that would, I would say six, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That's one, but I'd say there's maybe, we were thinking of maybe four. Something down near the train stations for sure. And then wherever we could find, probably by the rec center. Say four, but we didn't really, we haven't gotten that specific about it.
Okay. When we had our beautification meeting about a week ago, I was speaking with Lauren and Tenetti and I. We, we thought perhaps we would be able to borrow or rent a watering truck from either Elmsford or Terrytown or one of the other villages that does use a watering truck to order the plants. And I don't know how many times a week you need to do the watering. And of course, somebody brought up the objection that the employees are unionized, but we could use our own people because machines are not in the union. So, you know, the use of equipment. But there, another way to go is to buy a tank and put it on a trailer and get an electric pump and a hose and to... Expense-wise, we'd be much less than paying seventeen, seventeen thousand or whatever for a watering truck. But we, we thought we might approach one of the other villages to see about the possibility of just renting their equipment rather than buying a watering truck of our own.
Wasn't that definitely...
And it was just an idea.
No.
You know?
Knocked it up, no.
And they might even, you know, do it at a nominal fee. And in return, they might lend them some other type of equipment they could use for downing trees or something else. You know, it's just a possibility.
I think, I think one of the problems between the ARPA and the Mad Pardon is to help out or something like that. Come up with a strategy, yeah.
I know, it's right, come up with a cost and a couple of options, because as we saw with the...
Because what, you actually installed hoses, so simply like, I should, my house is so vast, maybe there's only going to be like six hoses.
Well, no, but you got to do the, you got to do the...
The boxes.
Yeah, and you got to do the fresh, the freshener. So, you know, it's not just going to be isolated to the containers.
Well, you know, I mean, with the trees, I mean, some of them, you could almost put in some kind of irrigation system, it makes sense, yeah, but...
Not really.
It's just necessarily a...
It's true, it's true, I can. But you could have the bags.
It is, right.
But they have to be, they have to be... I was thinking, you know, that's only...
But the irrigation is normal, you still have the faucet and...
There's still a hose there.
A hose or something out there?
Because I mean, I mean, I think one of the interesting things about, if you think about all of our parks, we only have two full-time parks with employees, period. You know, which is pretty remarkable to me.
Yes.
Yeah, and they have to maintain all of our parks.
Right.
They even help maintain the woods and the trails in the woods and obviously a lot of volunteers help as well. But, you know, I do think that Terrytown has, you know, I mean, in our, in our DPW, I think we have a twelve...
Twenty-five or two.
Yeah, I was going to say twelve. So, you know, we used to have twenty-four or twenty-six.
Yeah.
So it's a big difference.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that that's part of the issue as well. Elmsford is tiny.
Elmsford has a watering truck, that's very, very down. You know, I just think that...
Beautiful.
Joe?
One of the things a lot of communities do is they send out workers an hour before the workday. And in Rye, in Porchester, they have a truck that goes out when there's no traffic and they get a, you know, they get an employee to go out and do it. And I do think we have the ability, when we're hiring people, to, even though the normal workday is seven to three-thirty, I think there's always, like in the contract, the ability to have an agreement with an employee and supervise it that they could, that can be changed, am I right, Larry?
That's correct. Yeah. So why don't we do this, Joe? Why don't we, why don't we put it out on ARPA? I mean, I think, I think everyone in this board, I think everyone in the community thinks it's great. You know, like we love the planning, we love all of that.
I, I think that watering has been, you know, an issue for a long time. We've talked about it in my years here, four or five times, but I think, I think that's critical. I don't know, the best way to solve it, you know, the idea of municipal sharing is nice, but that doesn't always work. Everybody needs it at the same time. But I, I think there are lots of ideas that once there's, you know, general support for finding a way to do this, irrigation of the trees and the, you know, at, at the leaves, perhaps trees and we, and, and fixing the, the planters on the, on the buildings, I mean, just that line needs watering. I think we could move forward on that.
Yeah, we can think if it's, the investment in the planters and the trees and containers is worthwhile, then it is unsensible not to be willing to make a...
So, Joe, I'll just ask you to maybe come back with a, with a potential...
I think it's going to have to include Greg, because I think the trees on Main Street are more of a DPW issue. So I think this will be a joint thing that him and I will work out together.
Yeah, good.
And we'll come back with something, because I don't think it's one or the other. I think it's probably more of a combination.
Yeah, and I think one of the, I don't know if you guys have talked to the new Chamber of Commerce, but it's probably the most active group by far since I've been out, since I've been in town.
It's a good name.
Name is Nick Campbell.
Nick Campbell.
He's insurance on Hudson, it's the old this and that.
Okay.
But he's, you know, I think...
I'll be happy to send you his contact, you can find him, you know?
He's very active, he has a core that's very active. It's probably similar in size to the beautification committee, you know, twelve or thirteen people. It seems that he runs everything these days. You know, but I think that they're very motivated and they, I think they'd love to partner up with some of these things. So, you know, beyond maintenance and things like that, you know, it's all the village, other things, like, you know, enhancements, it's something that maybe they've worked with. I'll reach to somebody, you know, I think what's happening too is traditionally our Chamber of Commerce was one local person and then twenty-five people from White Plains.
That work here.
Right. Or don't even work here, but it's the insurance companies from White Plains or whatever. It's now switched, it's, you know, probably eighty percent local people.
I think they take Rye there.
So it's, it's, so I think that that's starting to, starting to change.
His name is Nick Campbell?
Nick Campbell.
Yeah, I'll write it down.
I'm wondering, we haven't heard about the, you're about to raise...
Maybe something else right now is raised.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
Oh, it's Nick at insuranceonhudson.com, okay.
The business raise.
Nick Campbell, and it's that corner there that you know well.
Right. This is a project that we've been doing for a very long time. And we felt very strongly, perhaps not fast, to some other opinions, that we love the live reads, live greens for various reasons. But when we got together about a year ago, and we've done some experimentation over the last few years. I know Joe can say that the garden does, we, some people like snowplains.
Snowplains. Snowflake.
So we've tried a few snowflakes, you know, the lights are different colors. And last year we tried an artificial reef. What we found is we had to get two artificial reefs to put them together to make the statement that an ever, that a, a live reef...
A single live reef wouldn't make it?
Would make. And it did make that statement. Doesn't have the fragrance of the evergreen, but it did make that statement. So we, in thinking, and Joe had sent me some numbers, do you want me to go?
Sure. We currently spend about three thousand dollars on the wreaths that go on the poles a year. The entire greening of the village is about six thousand, and that's for the rope thing and everything else that goes, but the wreaths themselves, then twenty-eight's the number to use that, let's say we wanna put up. If we buy the double everlasting wreath, better than saying artificial reef.
Everlasting.
She told me that yesterday.
All right.
So the everlasting wreath, two of them together, would actually cost about the same as one live wreath that we buy now. So the payback for the investment would be there, and we've identified a spot to store them if we go in that direction. So for a seventy-five hundred dollar outlay, the committee, if that's the budget you gave them, they'd have the opportunity to probably purchase thirty to thirty-five, because you need to buy some extra, because the chance you'll find the same exact one in three years is not likely, so you wanna have a little stock in case something goes wrong. But if you wanna go in that direction, that's enough money to do up and down Main Street. And, you know, again, within two years, you, you've got your money back for your investment.
Joe?
Yes.
What's the lifetime of the, of the artificial reefs?
Yeah, that, that, the question...
They're out of the sun and they're out in the weather and the wind.
So it's not like flower boxes that might be a decade or two? I mean, it could be...
And the lights, the lights on them too, which could build even quicker than the wreath itself, so you'd have to replace the lights, which is labor incentive, that someone's gotta take it off.
But in terms of the live reeds...
Yeah, that's true.
We throw them away anyway, so hopefully you get some extent of using the lights.
Yeah.
Although you pointed out that if we had to replace lights, there is some labor.
Yeah, it's probably lasted a long time, I guess.
They've advanced a lot. We apologize, we have an ARPA meeting, and just before I go, I just wanted to take a minute. This young lady, Jamie Corridina, Jamie is, uh, doing her internship with the department for the next fourteen weeks. When she's done, she'll officially be a college graduate of SUNY Portland. She's already had a big impact on our department and will be very active this fall, so you'll see her around quite a bit. Sorry we didn't leave.
Okay.
So there's a trend out there, I mean, I would almost think that we would wanna not necessarily invest totally in the artificial everlasting wreaths.
Try to gradually...
Well, or just do a certain number and find out if they actually are everlasting or how many seasons they would.
They would last, yeah.
Because, you know, you do have the other side, the manufacturing and disposal cost of the artificial reef compared to the natural reef bridges.
Hannah, you guys comfortable mixing them?
Well, we, we only have one. We only have, we have snowflakes though, so we could put them in place of those tough plates.
Artificial snowflakes?
Everlasting, yes.
I think because they're so high up and...
You can't spell them anywhere.
You can't spell them anyway. They'll have the same ribbons that, unless, you know, you're the... We hope.
I'm just concerned about the lifecycle, that's all. Because if you're only gonna buy us three years and there's, there's the manufacturing and disposal cost in terms of the plastics, then it's not a way to go.
You know, in just in the interest of time efficiency, so that you said there were, you know, obviously these are all important issues, watering is clearly, that's something we've raised.
That was right. Got that worked out, right.
Let's, let's work that out and figure out a way. I'm not sure we need to figure out the balance of real and everlasting at this meeting.
Well, what you're suggesting though, is that we only do, we did one last year, we did one.
We did six.
Yeah, six.
Six.
And we spent the snowflakes.
I'm also guessing that if you, if, if Joe has a manufacturer, they might have a ten year warranty, we have no idea, you know, so they might be, we might be able to say, well, Scarsdale's used them for the last thirty-eight years and they last about seven and a half, like, we might be able to find out the answer.
It's up for you to find out.
You know, we, we can come back, I mean, I think, I think we're all for...
Yeah, I mean, we love natural wreaths, but thinking economically, maybe it's...
I think those considerations all make sense. I, I share some of Arc's concerns that, that there are many advantages to, to having the regular real green ones. And if it's not a giant cost savings, it might be better to stay separately. So if you bring us that information, that...
Right, right.
Find out how much is worth it.
To the, to the real ones.
But potentially we could be paying for the watering with the price savings.
Yeah. Chamber of Commerce was a great entry for you to re-explore the whole boxes in front of the businesses. Now, some of them are obviously beautiful and thriving, is that because the, the particular business?
Yes. Order them.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
So what are they?
Also, you had mentioned that, um, one of the concerns you have is, you know, your, your committee's been operating the same group of you for a while. Have you, do you have, I hate to use the word succession plan, but... New people?
We will want, we will try. Anybody that wants to work for them.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you share with virtually every other committee in the village, everybody wants more volunteers, everybody, there's more work to do than hands to do it. Just some suggestions about, you know, do you use the farmer's market table at all to try and, you know, get people, who's to, you know, provide information about what you do? Do you give like little tiny, like, I love the idea of giving little opportunities, do you... Sorry, or something, but just like break it out so that people can buy into some small...
Yeah, or it seems like you're the magic elf.
Adopt a box. Adopt a box.
And, you know, like, people who live in the village, you may be calling to, in front of one of their, one of the, the...
The gardens.
I'm just random, just spreading it out a little bit and more people to buy in.
Janice, along that lines, freebie would be some, something from the mayor's desk or something from, it's like twenty plus.
And invite them to...
When you're getting ready to do greening or when you're getting ready to do the spring or something, invite people to come and join, maybe...
And maybe clear them up to meet the lines.
We actually had a few walk-ons.
Yeah.
That was...
Or somebody sees you in the spray.
Right. I think there's a number ways to take them out.
I think Janice's idea of, okay, having a table at the farmer's market is a very... It is. There are many people that come to that that are into gardening.
So much is so selective with you.
Yeah, so, you're just working out with, um, Suzie Palmer?
But, but also, just, I think just getting it out, out there more and looking to, to just like chunk it out into small things that people can buy into, so not, not coming to join, but committee, because you do not want to join committees.
Right.
Yeah, but to...
But then again, there's that loyalty, you can't plan if you can't count them up.
Right. But once you... But just a way of pulling in...
To add to it, yeah, yes. Christmas is a good time for that, especially a good time. That's when people want to come and smell the breeze and the light, yeah.
So I could just say that the beautification committee is sort of under the radar. You guys have done a really good job.
We have blown up.
Not many people who feel appreciated, I think people enjoy it, but I don't think they appreciate the work that you've done, and I'm sure that our board does, and I'm sure that you've done, you're not only the work, but, but your expertise and your advice in terms of wreaths, in terms of plantings, and suggestions.
As a matter of fact, last Christmas, I was at the, in front of the deli on the top of Main Street, and this woman came by and she said, "Do you have a card?" She wasn't kidding.
I went to her house.
I was like, yeah, we're a volunteer, oh.
Even better.
So I wanna throw a mini curve ball for you guys to think about for next season, not, not every season. Spring. Yes.
Next season.
Spring and summer is, maybe do some research about if there are some, I know you focus a lot on in the spring with, you know, cold hardy annuals and maybe switch up or two, sort of like more extensive stuff for the summer. You know, we've been talking about pollinator pathway, butterfly and etc. It's important.
And that's such a curve ball, right?
Well, the curve ball is to, to start looking, because I know a lot of stuff that gets planted is sort of like, you know, greenhouse brewing, and it's not necessarily something that is high value to the pollinators, so maybe that's something to think about.
We discussed this last night at the pollinator meeting.
Yeah, so...
And I have my own view on that, I, I'm open, but as it exists now, I would like, I would say, one, our containers are not large enough for pollinating plants, so for the most part, they thrive. And two, the reason we plant these containers is, and of course we have to call back, mostly on annuals, is because they are ever moving during the seasons. Whereas where it's most perennial, pollinators are not.
Well, that's...
So those are dials.
That are, that are...
Running out, you mean?
No, I was gonna say, are annuals that are pollinator friendly annuals.
Something to think about.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yes.
No, I mean...
And I understand annuals because they tend to be extended growing, rather than you get you two weeks or thirty day period.
Right. And the rest of it just sits there.
And did you not say you were gonna consider identifying one section at the top of this, of, of Main Street? Of Main Street?
I'm sure that this is something, um...
Something to talk about.
I will say, I threw out, I threw out to the pollinator panel, the idea of getting your hands dirty, maybe in conjunction with a beautification, and do a little demonstration area to learn about the pollinators. I mean, it's not, dealing with perennials is not as simple as you think, and, um, there's a lot of knowledge that goes into that, but I've talked to Joe and I think our committee needs to talk about it together. But if we were to support that effort, which, I mean, how can you not wanna support pollinators? I love pollinators, I admire them, but again, you're talking about expense, time, maintenance, and fees, and all of that.
So, I mean, there are demonstration curbs in the, close to the...
That's where that would be.
So, Joe said that, and I was not familiar with this, but he said that you're in the process of parting master plan to replace the bulletin boards. Oh, and let me bring up, because this is an issue that the committee has had concern about, is the need for better maintenance of certain areas like that area around the bulletin boards, that burn that goes down Broadway, their lines or parking trees. And it is, it really is a focal point. And particularly if that would be an area where we'd wanna make a demonstration garden. I don't feel familiar, in Tarrytown, near the funeral home and the bulletin boards, they have, they have sand animation and milkweed, and so they've done a little bit of that themselves. But everything needs maintenance, and it's important. I mean, I know even in a warm world, a few, a few weeks ago, lots of weeds, and then somebody paid attention to it and really cleaned it up, it looks much nicer. But, you know, we, we feel that's all, that's all part of the package, that if you're gonna spruce up and want to, you know, look great as a little... Yeah, for everybody, you have to deal with that.
I just wanna say, you can't just put it in and say, "Oh, there it is," it's not, of course, it has to be...
How about that is not...
So I think, yeah.
No.
The plastic bees are...
Members in our group that are knowledgeable enough to be able to put in a pollinator garden and even divide things and donate to our own gardens.
And there's, you know...
That's true, we have things in our own gardens that we could donate.
You've got, I mean, there's a lot of resources locally as well that, you know, if there's additional information needed, but a lot of that, you're probably exposed to already, there's online resources, there's, you know, the Flat Center is nearby, Carolyn Summers.
We already have this premier, I think that lady, was at the meeting last night. I mean, you gotta learn from somebody that's learned not only online, trial, or trial area, but anyway, I suggested that, you know, we all get our hands through that, so that might develop.
So, so are we to have a, a plan for the, the watering maintenance that we'll, we'll look at what that is? As far as the wreaths, you're gonna get some information about the, you know, the cost thing and then...
It may, it may already be too late to, to do that this year.
The same this year, as always.
Are you guys able to undertake a survey of the boxes? Or have you already done that?
We did go, I, yeah, we did take...
So we know what the challenge is and what...
We, we could certainly do that.
That would be nice.
Do you support that idea of...
The number of containers.
Even if it's a process of three or six a year and...
I mean, I think, we know that this place is always in front of this door and they always destroy it even if we water it, you know, like, maybe we don't wanna go in there, but like, I think we definitely would be open to proposal on that.
And then with the, with the, with the consumer, commerce has another voice in there. If we had a meeting, but here's, here's the proposal on the boxes that are fine, the boxes that haven't worked, these would need to be replaced, but should we replace them, I think that conversation would be valuable to, to have, and that we...
And that's a good conversation.
Should we replace them? Should we replace them based on what?
Well, that would be a discussion between...
Right, because if you, if you say to one store owner...
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And then someone else comes in and go, "What?" We have one, we have one man who insists on planting something himself, right, he's very nice, you know, but he won't take anything from us. "Oh, no, I, I put these in..." He wants to do them.
Garden is another, and so...
I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to, you know, as part of the chamber liaison.
Well, if you support the three points that we talked about, in theory, we'll come back with some specific...
That's a great idea. The watering and the plants and the wreaths, I think are the right major.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Ann. Thanks, Rita.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, thank you, everybody.
Good to see you up here. We appreciate what you do.
In the, what do you mean? In the, in the stores?
Yeah, okay. Well, if Alan can get here, anything about the tree park project that...
Probably looking for a parking place.
Thank you so much.
So we're moving on to discussion of revisions to the noise regulations? Mary Ann, if you wanna...
Yeah, okay. You know, let me, do you have that, this in front of you?
The draft? That's attached to the agenda.
Let's just go through, I'm, I'm, I made a, I'm not, I made a budget in natural change, you know, me to know what all that...
Should we take a half step back and kinda say why we're doing this?
Yes. Well, there were a couple, couple things, okay? One was, um, somebody pointed out to us, and it's right, that, that the, the standard in here was not an objective standard, it was a, you know, not a reasonable process standard. I mean, I think it was, it was just a, I, I don't think there's any other way to read it, but we clarified that to eliminate this initiative, I made that change in, in, in A. So now it's just, rather than that it disturbs somebody, it disturbs a reasonable person of mental health, that was one objection that was raised. And then, and then the other one was, um, um, the... a way to, a way to deal with that, the way, I think, I think we, that the board sort of reminded, it's a little hard to say, you know, it can't be unreasonable, because what's reasonable for one person might not be for another, and then a better way to do that might be to put in a decibel limit, and smooth around it, and smaller stances, and, you know. I think there's a good framework here, dealing with that, for, you know, that you would have this different decibel levels expectation in residential than in a non-residential area, and also, I think it's pretty carefully worked out about how you would measure it, and where you would measure it, and stuff like that. I got stuff from different, from different stances, I think it works pretty well for you. The one thing that we haven't settled on is, was what's the appropriate DVA. I did, I did speak with a couple of acoustic engineers, you know, to see if they could help out, and they couldn't really, you know, they said just, you know, sort of, that's what it's, anyway, because I think it might be worth going through this, and there's just, you know, there's a big blank, big set of blanks to be filled in, but other than that, if you, if you guys think it works, and then we can go forward, and then let's talk about it, we have to come up with the numbers. I think, and people were hoping that in the last couple, you know, couple weeks, there would have been an event that somebody could have brought out in matter, but apparently there...
I know, and, yeah, I call, sorry, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what, we're hoping to do that before tonight, but rather than wait until there's something, an event to measure, at least let's get the framework for the law, and then fill in the blanks. It's not, it's obviously not a simple fill in the blanks, but it's something that...
The other thing, I think, was to go with the fines, right? That's, we asked that question a little bit.
Yeah, well, we'll get, we'll get to that, I don't think that we had discussed that before, but I mean, I think it's worth discussing, because in my writing this up, it occurred to me that the fines, particularly for construction noise, are so low, that they're not much of a distance sensitive, so I think we should talk about that, anyway. Is there enough of an explanation, Brian?
I think so.
Okay. All right. The first change is the one that's in paragraph A, where it rather talks about that it annoys somebody, that it annoys a reasonable person of normal sensitive sensibilities, and that was a language from, there was a Syracuse case that upheld that, that's language, and that's uncomfortable with that language. Everything else, all those other changes on page one are just...
These are all, these have been in here for years, right?
Yeah, those aren't any change. And anything new is in a tale, the other stuff's on the same. Number two is, I took out, I, this draft takes out number seven, about the noise generated by a business, that impacts its neighbors, specifically a business, it says in the waterfront zone, that was industrial zone, and when we changed the industrial zone to waterfront zone, we just went through and changed everything that was in, this doesn't really make any sense, this was a set of standards that was put there for, when it, when there was actually industry in that area, and it's not, so it just doesn't make any sense, and, and the other provisions in here would cover that, that there needs to be a special one for that machinery, exactly, that was, that's what that was aimed at. So, when it says amended in 2014, it was only amended to change from industrial to waterfront, right? Okay. Nothing, nothing else on that is, none of the, there's only change on two, there's no changes on three, just the renumbering, okay? And then this is the big one, on page four. Right now, it reads that it's, I'm not reading, unreasonable plane using or operating or permitting to be played, used, or operated, any radio receiving such a to bit of, physical instrument or instruments, bonded, or other machinery device for producing or reproducing a sound in such a manner as to disturb the peace, quiet, and comfort of the neighboring inhabitants, or at any time of water volume that's necessary for convenience for the person or persons who voluntarily, or voluntary listeners. The operation of any such set between the hours of midnight and 7:00 a.m., in such a manner as to be plainly audible on adjacent property shall be part of facial evidence of violation of this section. That language was all taken out, it's just being, you know, even not subjective so much is like, it's so not objective, and how do you, how do you measure that? So, that's what I think, that we thought it would be better to, decibel levels. And so, that's what this gets at, so that no person in any residence district, and there's a reference to the section of the code which calls them residents, not residents, shall admit noise beyond the bond, because it is her premises, and then, so what we mean by premises, is any, any building structures, any of your land, so your premises would be anywhere on your land exceeding the following levels, and, okay, so if you're adjacent to a business waterfront or railroad district, it can't be above whatever level, and then if you're adjacent to a residence level, it can't be higher than either one of these of DBAs, which would be lower in residence districts than I may expect, the level would be lower than in the business district. And then there's different decibel levels for 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. This, the sign that before, it read midnight to 7:00 a.m., but I think that we talked about this a little bit, and thought that midnight's probably a little late at 10:00 p.m. or so, so we would call really night, night time noise from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. And then, the next standard is if you're in a non-residence district, those, those would be the limits. So, the paragraph C says, so let's say the decibel level is 65, okay? So, notwithstanding that, in individual cases where the background noise levels caused by sources not subject to this chapter exceed the standards contained here, a source should be considered to cause excessive noise if the noise emitted by that source exceeds the background noise levels by five DBAs, provided they can never be higher than eighty. So, that if somebody, if you example of crickets, and the crickets are really loud, and it's amazing when you, you know, go out with a meter, how...
Yes.
Not something that...
Prox crickets.
Yeah, so anyway, all right, then, then, I don't, no, do you want me to go through the procedures for it, share reasons, or...
I think so, since we're kind of all presenting everyone.
Then these are the noise level measurement procedures, for the purposes of determining noise levels, this, the following should be observed, it's separate from what DVA is, and then, then all personnel conducted, conducting sound measurements should be trained in the current techniques and principles of sound measurement equipment and instrumentation. An instrument used to take sound level measurements should conform as, whoops, I guess, in the, to the operation specs of American National Standards Institute for Sound Level Meters. And then these are the general steps, first of all, you have to follow the instrument manufacturer's specific instructions, the sound level meter has to be calibrated before and after each set of measurements, this is all very typical, similar to speed measurements, if you're measuring speed by radar. When measurements are taken out of doors or wind screens, they'll be placed over the microphone and the sound level meter, the sound level meter should be placed at an angle so the sound source is specified by the manufacturers, it's approximately at least four feet above the ground, and it shall be placed so it's not situated by individuals conducting the measurements. Measurements shall be taken at a point that's located about one foot beyond the boundary of the emitter's premises within the receptor's premises. So, like, if your neighbor complaining, you go, you know, to the closest point on their property instead, on the property line, step back, or what, that's right, no, or you go to their point, and then you measure it on your property, so it's within the receptor's premises, the receptor green, the person who's listening. Okay, so, and then the penalties, paragraph, one of the penalties that are in now, fifty dollars, they're rated 250 dollars for every violation, probably makes sense for, you know, a lot of the barking dog or singing in the street after bedtime, whatever. Then, there's a, when you did the leaf blow with law, you came up with a different fine, and that's what's in two, a hundred dollars for the first offense, 250 for any subsequent offense, you should, for this noise one, you're gonna have to come up with a penalty for that, obviously, like the construction noise thing, which I'm gonna get to in a minute, it can't be too low, because you need it to be a distance sensitive, and then, and then I did notice this on the, you know, the violations for this construction noise of, you know, fifty, 250 dollars, is sort of ridiculous, I'm thinking, you might talk about, you know, raising that.
I mean, I think, I think this is a, a very good kind of overview and process, and of course, the crux being what are their decibel levels, you know? That's, that's the, the entire, everything else is a great setup for determining those levels.
Yeah.
What's the range that we've seen in some of the sample laws?
Well, a lot, yeah, a lot seems to be around, I don't know what the range is, let's see, come here. Here was Norwalk, Connecticut, bring my hand, Norwalk's, is one of the acoustical engineers suggested that theirs, that theirs was pretty good, and theirs has, if you're in a residential, for any commercial use, well, 55, pretty much during the day, whether it's commercial or from another non-residence, I mean, another residence, and 45 at night, that's if you're in a residential zone, and that one, if you're in, well, if you're in a commercial zone, you can emit noise higher than 62 toward a commercial, and 55, 45, I guess it's the same, 55 during the day and 45 at night. That one seemed to be a little strict.
It seems kind of...
Pardon?
That seems kind of...
Yeah, especially given the measurements that we were, the one that when we were here, when we were doing it, trying to figure out...
55 with the crickets?
Yeah, I think that, I think they were, yeah.
But I do like the idea of having, you know, that, that section C that gives a five decibel range above and below.
I'm just looking at Greenwich, and Greenwich is, Greenwich is similar, actually, Greenwich is 55, 55 during the day and 45 at night, and in the, in the business district, it's a little bit higher. So, I'm not saying that's a complete range, but it's a ballpark that other places do use.
The other thing I've observed is, like, if you're down here, everywhere, you know, there's periods of time where the ambient noise is actually quite high as the train is going by, but I...
But yes, coming by, yeah.
Well, I mean, you're way above...
Oh, you mean eighty, you live up there?
Well, maybe not eighty, but you...
Yeah, but you, yeah, but I mean, I think, I think there's a stand, you know, a sort of reasonable, sort of a standard reasonable, there's something...
The toll horns aren't gonna count, and the train...
Yeah, yeah, you wait till the...
That's reasonable.
You wait till the train goes past, you know, and then you measure, and you have to assume some reason.
We don't have to call that out.
I think so.
Sure. Let's run north, communicate, cooperate with us on that.
So, Larry, everyone in our police department's gonna need to be trained in doing this, orally, digitally, something, yeah? I mean, someone who, that's to be at least one person who's gonna be on, on duty at the time, right?
So, you can, oh, there's usually one surgeon, so...
We've not, we've not done any research on this, at this stage, to identify the equipment and see if it's all training. I mean, I'm asking that because, you know, it's similar to, you know, a speed gun, but I don't think we use speed guns. Do we?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, radar guns. And what, what's the...
Yeah, certification.
Annual certification, and then the, even the spectrometers are tested, I think, monthly. How often are those things challenged, when people get stopped?
When someone pleads not guilty.
I would say that anytime, I haven't been here, but in the courts that I have, remember, there's a, a trial, that, if the contest to go through...
Yeah, one of the certified, one of the instruments certified.
So, that's the one question I have that's open-ended for me, is I don't understand what the, you know, what the baseline certification is, when you have to test calibrating, and then verify afterwards, yeah? So, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, I'm not looking at you, but I'm just saying, we should probably know that, because what kind of facilities do you need, you know, do you need an...
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure you find that out along with, when you get, when you get the equipment, nobody's gonna bother selling this equipment unless, unless it can be calibrated, because it's not worth anything.
Well, I guess I just think that we should do due diligence before, not you.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we... Buy anything, we should make sure it works.
Well, before we...
Make sure it works, make sure it works, and make sure it's not too hard for somebody to do it.
And it's where a semester's training, that it's something that's fairly easy to use and fairly easy to train.
For instance, it seems to be using a phone, but not, but you, I don't know how you would call, so that's not the same thing as a professional sound meter.
Exactly.
Yeah, there was some articles, didn't there, Larry, circulated, there's new articles around how to, with calibrating sound and measuring it in New York City?
Well, it happened to be, it was a TV...
Oh, that's right, it was a little video clip, right? It's not a super easy thing to do, but it's doable. My guess is like, probably like radar.
Right, but I think the, the crux of the report was that there's different ways to set the meter, and that will respond to various frequency ranges.
Right, and that's why we're, hey, is it that's the C, or...
Yeah, whatever, right, so that, and that may respond to the noise differently, it'll measure a certain noise differently.
This, this was specific, and it was based on what these acoustical engineers wanted to...
Can you hear for a moment?
Yeah.
Can you answer that?
Yeah, sure.
Come on.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Sure. Billy, want to sit up here, too?
Sure, whatever you want.
David Steinmetz, I'm Zaryn Steinmetz, and very good to be back and to see all of you again, been a while.
Oh, good to meet you.
You're representing Hudson Lofts, and, and at the outset, I really want to thank you, because I'm the one that precipitated this by writing a letter to the village, and identifying a couple of issues that we thought were worthy of further analysis and inquiry, and Mary Ann, I appreciate you obviously delving into it. I think a lot of the changes that you have made to your ordinance, with or without Hudson Loft, and our issue and our concern, and some of the neighbors' concerns, I think you've done the right thing, or you're doing the right thing for the Village of Irvington, I think you had a, a local ordinance that required some tuning up, no...
Sixty years.
Yes, but a couple of concerns that we want to raise, and appreciate being heard, I know it's not a public hearing, and I will try to be very brief. First of all, you should know, maybe the best news that we can share with you, there have been several parties and events recently, so I can't tell you that, I'm delighted to be here tonight at the beginning or middle of September, and you don't realize that there were events that took place at the end of August, and beginning of September, so...
We noticed.
It's significant to our clients, because there were no violations, there were no issues with, with the police and otherwise. issues with, with the police and otherwise, so I think that's important. Second, um, I definitely would love to know whether you have done any kind of empirical analysis of this, and I think C is a great provision, your, your...
Correct, that's a correct...
Um, I think it's, I think it's very important, especially in a, in a municipality that has a, a train line going through it, which is a rather significant source of, of ambient noise, as Marcus, you identified.
Transient.
Understood, understood.
Plus it's the four oh five freight train, garbage train.
Then it goes for about...
Then it goes for about now.
Have you, has anyone tested the train noise to determine where that is on the DB meter at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause, and maybe that's something we should do. Um, I can't, I can't identify Bill as a, an acoustic engineer or an expert, but he does have one of those little funky acoustic apps on his phone.
Yes.
And during your discussion here, while we sat patiently listening, you were kicking in at about a fifty-three. So, um, you know, so I raised that, and I appreciate the nodding heads. I, I, I'm not quite, you know, I don't know how quiet they are in Norwalk, but the forty-five and the fifty-five is a little bit more sedentary than I have heard and, or seen in other municipalities. So, I, I ask you to...
But I would say that if you went to the adjacent property, it would probably be fifty-five. It's in the room.
That's, that's correct, that, that's, without question.
And if I were a homeowner at a time of night, I might not want other people, even at this level of noise.
Absolutely. But anyway, we, a point taken.
Understood, and that, that, just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
When Mark was talking once, it was in the sixties, I think, so...
I haven't been here in a while, I'm sure it's been quieter since I have been here, Mark.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just me, I've been testing, being in the room, and everything at...
They said seventy-seven. Mary Ann's laugh is very loud.
Yeah, a lot.
But, uh, but yes, they know, and it's, that's the, the magic of it.
Well, why does it matter what the train is? Yeah.
Um, because I, I would be curious to know what the ambient train noise is at or about the property, because we might kick into the C and we might kick into the...
But, but we talk, the, I don't think anybody's gonna give you a ticket because the sound is high while a train is going by, like, you have to figure out some common sense.
And we have to stop the train and take it.
No, without question, I wouldn't think you would.
It's not very warm.
Well, and you're not gonna, and you're not gonna get a pass all the way up to eighty just because every time the train goes by, it's at ninety. You know what I mean? That's not the way the law makes it.
I, I don't see that in this area.
Right, yeah.
We're kids here.
It's just like, you just some of the, some of the...
One of the questions, um, one of the questions that I know that Bill has is, is whether the village would entertain an hour later than ten PM. And I, and I know you've all discussed it, and I know you have a cutoff from ten to seven. Um, ten is on the, on the early side, certainly for the success and the vibrancy of a local business, and, um, as long as we could come within, well, empirical DBs, and that's the value and why I suggested in my letter to you that you have an objective standard. Determine what the objective standard is, enforce it, but entertain the possibility that a venue that is having events here in your village might actually have events beyond ten o'clock at night.
I don't understand how that helps, how that helps, because you have to meet the guideline of the noise level. You'd be meeting the daytime guideline, but...
Well, I'm not sure, because, Mark, because you haven't filled in the numbers, I have no idea what they are.
Yes, probably, my, my guess is there'd be a ten, ten DB, um...
Difference.
A differential between it, ten to...
Just say it again.
Pardon? Yeah. I mean, and most of the statutes, that's what I've seen, is the ten, ten DB.
I've seen that as well. So, so, understanding, understanding your DBs and understanding your hours is, is significant. And the only other comment, and Bill brought this to my attention, um, you have, in your, in your list of default declared loud noises, you have, and this has, I guess, always been there, deliveries and pickups, the making of deliveries of supplies or merchandise or collection of garbage or refuse. We're not worried about garbage or refuse, I'm not exactly sure how broad deliveries of supplies or merchandise, um, you wanna address what, what you would explain to me?
Yeah, the, um, the furniture rental people and the poor people load the trucks at night, and, you know, they load till morning, till morning. They're quiet, but they load.
Right, so that may not be a noise-producing event, um, but it is, it is, there is some type of supplier merchandise that is moving after eleven o'clock. We at least wanna make sure you know that, and then make a, a policy determination whether you think that is a violation of your noise law de facto.
The only thing bothers me about, I mean, I understand all these points, but remember that one concern is yours. The venue is surrounded by residence, residential area, you know, both on South Manhattan, that there's, uh, you know, a condo apartment complex right next door, and, um, so, I don't know, you know, there's gotta be some recognition of the fact that it is, you know, that here. And that sound sort of is omnidirectional, so, I don't know whether it should accept that, uh, I don't know, of loading, uh, of equipment and tables and chairs, I don't know if that should get an exception or not. I feel it's kinda like you're still right next to the residential neighborhoods, so, you know, you're gonna wanna keep the sound within some reasonable limit.
And how often is that? Is that...
Every time.
And you had any complaints on that?
No, that's the next question, have they...
Oh, they had?
No, no.
It's a very, Mark, I hear your point, it's a very broad brush to sweep and paint with. Um, you know, I don't think you would tell residential folks that they can't go to their cars and open their trunks and bring merchandise and goods in and out of their homes, um, so if, after eleven, and if, if it's not a noise producer, I think it's an overly broad category. I think you just, you know, I, we're asking you to take a look at it.
I see why it's there, I mean, it's, maybe about Main Street, apartments over, um, businesses on Main Street, you know, deliveries and pickups, you know, they might not, you know, allowed to, you know, be disrupted.
There's tractor-trailers too, so...
Well, and by any, I don't think, which is a...
Yeah, there's a, I almost think there's a comma that's missing before and.
I don't know.
I read that a few times, at first I thought it might be only deliveries that are coming from tractor-trailers, but then I determined that it's not it.
And by any tractor-trailer company.
There's a pause after the time.
There's a pause, yeah.
Um, so, look, we're asking you to take a look at it. Do you have questions, since, since we're the ones that precipitated this, and, and again, appreciate the fact that legislatively you're looking at it?
Yeah, we have, we, before your letter, we had, you know, when the, the complaints started coming in, we kinda looked at our laws and said, you know, these aren't exactly airtight laws, so we had started kind of the process rolling, um, on this even before we got your letter, um, because there's confusion, because especially that waterfront provision that is just, you know, frankly, not even worked on. Um, you know, so I think it was confusion for our police department, it was confusion for everyone, um, you know, so I think we knew we had to start doing this, I think your letter helps, you know, push it along by a month, probably, um, but, um, you know, so I think we, we were, we're trying to respond to you as well as respond to the, the, you know, giving, giving the residents a clear, 'cause, you know, they looked through the law and said, I'm not really sure when, when you can make this stop, you know, so I think we kinda used almost a common sense principle and said, let's try to make it eleven PM, even though that's not exactly what's written here. It was simple and ended that you could, we could have made it, you know, six PM, you know, but I think, working with the, you know, the residents, we're kind of, you know, they were willing to work with, with us somewhat, and just find something reasonable. Um, so, I think that's what we're trying to get to, is find that, that sweet spot where the business can continue, but, you know, at the same time, the residents can have a piece of privacy.
There's, there's no question in terms of the village's perception that it is a lawful use at the premises, correct? There's no issue on that?
I mean, I, I haven't really even thought about that, but, you know, to me, I'm just, well, we've been focused on the actual noise implications, yeah.
My point is, to the extent that it is a, a use that's allowed to be there, then I'm hoping that in addition, and you have every right and you should be concerned about the neighbor's perception, I would hope that your board would be equally concerned, or at least partially concerned, with making sure that the business can be functional and successful and coexist as it, as it should with its neighbors, just like you do with every other zoning determination.
I think this is something that's kinda, my reaction is kinda like, this is a little bit different because it's not a normal business you distribute use. Most businesses, unless you're a restaurant, you're closed by nine o'clock, eight o'clock, whatever your business is, you know, everything may be closed at six. So, and then restaurants, but, you know, the, the kind of, what's going on now is something that's, whether it's, it's, it's not illegal, but has it ever been thought about or looked at, you know, in terms of the implication of that specific type of usage, an entertainment spot? So, I, I don't think that that's, I mean, I don't, can't think that we've ever discussed that.
And David Loft, in, in places, restaurants may be, may be legal, but that doesn't mean that the municipality doesn't regulate music in those restaurants.
Absolutely, no question.
So, even though the use is permitted, it's very often regulated. So, the thing about the difference between the daytime and the nighttime, you gave an example of Greenwich with forty-five at night, fifty-five by day, is, is a ten, how big a difference are we talking about between a day and a night? I mean, because, you know, noise is a problem at nine, and noise is a problem at ten and eleven.
I was looking at kind of what, what is decibel level? Ten, ten decibels is normal breathing. Twenty is whispering from five feet away. Thirty, thirty is whispering nearby, I guess five feet isn't nearby. Uh, forty is quiet library sounds, which I don't even know what that really is. Uh, fifty decibels is a refrigerator running. Uh, sixty decibels is electronic toothbrush, so I can think of the difference between your refrigerator and electronic toothbrush, it's pretty big. Um, and then seventy is a washing machine, and then eighty is an alarm clock. So, you know, washing machine to an alarm clock, ten different, uh, you know, electric toothbrush to a washing machine, is ten different sizes.
Yeah, that one, Bill?
It's inside.
All right, so it's a locker in the stairs.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, exactly, it's not, yeah.
Right, right, it goes, and then again, Mark, can you put your noise thing up?
Sure.
I don't know how to use it, what is that, what was that?
It was the, you see the max, and right where I just turned it on.
That's what that was, with seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven indoors.
In here, even though it's, you see, again, I'm thinking, whoever called it up, we're talking about measuring, not, not the smallest, but, you know, there's the building, here's my property line, and you're how far into my property? A foot? Okay, so you stand inside the property of the neighbor a foot. Now, the building could be closed, or it could be parked, but you're only gonna go a foot into the, the next property, so it's not like necessarily like you and me just sitting here, you measuring me, so, um, trying to pick up the electric toothbrush across the roof, way over there. Just so you know, I talked to these guys, you know, I was trying to, look at that, three different ones, um, about maybe retaining them to help us come up with this, and they were all like, nah, you know, just looking, looking what I'm doing. Because they don't know, I mean, they, they, they seem to come in when somebody is, um, challenging, you know, challenging something in court, they get a, you know, violation in court, and they challenge that, and it, I wasn't asking them to do it for free, you know, I wasn't volunteering, I never thought of it, it wasn't, I think, I don't think it's something we can hide for somebody else to come in and do.
Right, so we have to figure it out, basically.
Right.
And we have to figure it out whole together. Um, and one thing seems to be that if you had a couple of events that nobody complained about and didn't seem to, you know, I was gonna say appear on the radar screen, which is probably not the image I want, but maybe let us know when you're gonna have an event.
Somebody, are you...
I'm one of the owners, yeah.
Yes, well, why don't, why don't you give us the dates or something?
Yeah, let us know when you're having an event, so that we are aware, um, and then at that point, we can...
You can have a site visit.
We can have a site visit, if we're not gonna call all the neighbors and say, hey, you know, there's gonna be an event, so make sure you're, you're ready to complain. If, if nobody complains, wonderful, but at least we'll be able to know what, what the noise level is, so we can say it was at this decibel level on this date, and this date, and this date with no complaints.
Just wanted to point out the reason there may not have been complaints recently, are the air conditioners running in the homes in the summer, and there's also more trees covering, but in the winter, the noise is much greater.
Sure, so we, we need to, again, figure out together, and I don't think we want to, you know, try to slice this and dice this so that it's from, you know, Labor Day Memorial that it can be this decibel level, and, you know, um, and it's...
Over sixty-five degrees.
Just explaining the lack of complaints, I wanted you to know.
We've also been monitoring it extremely closely and have heated the complaints, have heated and been very aware of trying to not be disruptive. We have been personally on-site, talking to the DJs, making sure the decibel level is acceptable to try to prevent anyone from being disruptive.
Great, so bring us into the...
Absolutely.
So that we can have some sort of official measurements that we'll be able to say, you know, we'll be able to know.
Yeah, I mean, you talk, you keep talking about decibels. Um, the, the, my main concern with the noise is, is the bass. The bass comes through, it's like, it's like a toothpick that doesn't go away, it comes right through the walls, right through the windows, and it permeates the house. Um, I don't know, if that, if decibels can be measured, you know, with the bass or just a, you know, just a noise, but, um, it's, it's the bass that really gets...
That's a, that's the other scale, I suppose, these scales. So, literally, I'm sorry.
Everybody, Ryan Hunst, I'll leave it, we'll ban, drift across the street and...
Well, wait, that's important, excuse me, I'm sorry, just a couple of people who talked, what you were saying you think is important?
We ban subwoofers in the space.
Why do you say that?
Subwoofers.
Subwoofers.
Our base, that's where the bass comes from.
I just wanted to make sure.
He was responding. I'm sorry, that's wrong.
So, I actually, I, I work in, in real estate and construction management, so I do have experience with sound engineers, and one of the things I just wanna bring to the attention of the board, it's not just decibels, it's frequency, and that's one of the biggest complaints that we all have, is, it's not necessarily the noise, it's also, you have to take into account the frequency of the noise. Low bass travels further and actually permeates through, um, through mass, so that's what the noise that we're really complaining about has to deal with. So, again, when you're speaking to the sound engineers and consulting on how to drop this, please ask them about that, that fact, that it's not just decibels, it's frequency.
Yeah, we have the definition of a weighted sound level, which is C number one.
I think this might, I don't think it, I don't think it deals with that.
Whatever the past is, the, the other common scale is the, not DVA but DBC, and that supposedly deals with very low frequency sounds, which tend to have a lot more, um, you know, kind of, kind of, act on, you, you feel that sound directly?
Well, I, I think we need to figure a way to off the, 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 I'm on this one, 'cause it's hard, I mean, like, what, it's beyond my case, yeah. I, I don't, you know, no, I, I don't mean, I, I just can't, I can't figure it out, I really can't figure it out, like, I don't even know what a subwoofer is, and I, I, I have a son-in-law who's a sound engineer and a daughter who's a musician, but I still don't know what's happening.
I'm not watching movies at Mary Ann's.
I think what's very important is we, next time there's an event, you know, we go out and listen, uh, from different places, and hear.
Yeah, I think, I think that's important, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about this other discussion.
Well, I think, it has to be, it has to be fair on both sides, right? So, let's, let's be honest, if they give you a date that there is an event, right? I'll be honest, they're controlling it.
We can go to the next eight events.
Well, that's what I mean, like, so it has to be harsh, I mean, exactly, and both ways.
I think I've been out there four or five times already to listen, um, and I actually, I thought I saw improvement from the original time it went out to now, 'cause I think they have been, uh, soundproofing and things.
Well, that's another thing.
To me, that's, if we can improve the soundproofing, eliminate subwoofers, I mean, I think there's things we can do, I, I think we need to fix our law anyway, to say it's antiquated, and I think this deals with the average neighbor turning on their radio and it's loud, not subwoofers shaking houses, so I think we have to do this anyway, regardless of, of this issue, like, even if you guys said we're closing tomorrow, or we put up this halometer, or it doesn't really matter, like, we still have to work on this anyway, but I think the second piece of it is that we wanna also address the specific complaints, so you guys can operate the way you wanna operate, and they can sleep the way they wanna sleep, um, you know, and I think that's what we have to focus on, on figuring out, so I think some of that's gonna be unique... So I think some of that's going to be unique to this one place. I think some of this law, this law is not unique to this situation, and it needs to be fixed, I believe, whether it's a barking dog or whatever. You know, so I think we have to continue ahead with this. But it might be easier if we're not trying to address all of these issues, and we try to address these issues as issues themselves. You know, so I think it's going to be a two-pronged thing. If this could fix it all, it'd be great. I don't think that we can, but I think this fixes noise in general in the village. It might also help with this particular situation, but it might not solve the situation. So I think that, that's why I think we have to go out there, you know, multiple times. Maybe one of us will go each Friday night for the next, you know, six weeks, whatever. But I think it is important to also go multiple times, at the same location, to see, A, how it's improved and not. And I think, I actually think some of this issue was, when you guys first opened, there wasn't that much soundproofing and things like that, when you got to figure it all out. We also have banned omnidirectional speakers, which are part of the problem. We're learning.
So what are the things that, what is the nature of the soundproofing? Maybe you know, but I just haven't heard of it. What was done that...
We built sound panels to hang on the ceiling. That's a lot of sound panels that are 4x10, they hang from the ceiling, you can't see them because they're, they're black, just like the ceiling is, and that traps the sound above and hidden and stuff. We've put sound insulation blankets in, in certain areas. We leave them downstairs below, so we, some of the sound was being emitted from the upstairs venue space into the parking garage and out from there. So we're working on getting it out.
You eliminated the subwoofers, you eliminated the onrangers?
Omnidirectional speakers. We, believe it or not, we found sound coming out of the air conditioning. So we, we went to a sound guy and an air conditioning guy, and we put baffles in the return duct and then planted it to stop the sound from coming out of the air conditioning units. We actually insulated the storm drain pipes, because the sound was coming out of the storm drains on the roof. It's a lot of, you know, this, for me, I've been doing this property stuff for 33 years, and this is the first time I've had me able to put my finger on something, you know, with one or two things and be able to fix it. This is kind of new and, you know, and every sound person I've talked to, they keep saying, you just have to pick away at it. It's not, you're not going to find one, one thing that's going to stop the sound from getting out, you just have to keep working on it. The next thing I'm going to do is put laminated plastic material on windows, just for the elimination of that with the sound.
Putting in a permanent kind of decibel reader or at least something to measure, a consistent measure.
When they decide what meter they're buying, we'll buy the same meter. And then we will control it with our in-house party people. Last thing, I don't want to be here tonight, I don't want to do this, I don't want to get the call, the police coming out of left, right, I don't want any of that, I want it to run smoothly. The other thing we might invest in is, is called a silent disco. So at a certain point in time, all the music goes off and everybody puts headphones on and it's dead silent.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, Brian, Matt, if you have different DJs coming in, right? It's, I'm sure it's an educational process with everyone, right? Everybody kind of does things a little bit different. And so I was asking if there's a permanent kind of meter on location where people know, hey, I can't go above.
We do that now with our meters. Now I would want to be in tune with what the village buys, so we're all checking the same thing.
Just we're all at the same channel?
Right, on the same channel, yeah. I want to make sure it's right. But, yeah, believe it or not, we don't want, we've got a lot of money in this. I've got, we've lost tremendous amount of money, a tremendous amount of money from the complaints and the police coming down. I would venture to guess we've lost over $4 million because people have walked away from renting the venue because of the word that I had about the police. I can't afford that. Doesn't work. Listen, Toby, maybe I'll, you can call up Eddie and Larry and myself, if we can get that list.
Yeah.
We won't come in and bother you guys, but, you know, we'll...
You're welcome to come in and bother us.
I mean, I've been in there for a minute. Have a drink, it doesn't sound loud. So, yeah, so maybe that'd be great, that way we can just, you know, try to pair up even and try to go out and listen.
Not a problem at all. I just add that, note that if you go to the venue, it may not sound as loud as it does when it emanates uphill.
I know where Kevin is.
So come on over there, I think that's possible, we'd be happy. And I'd also...
I'm sorry, Ryan gets it even worse, because the sound comes up the driveway and it's right into his house.
So that's not, that's not meaningful?
Yeah, so our driveway is directly across from the driveway by 50 bucko. Do you know, the down kind of... So we're directly across from that. So it might just be, you know, with acoustics, it could be bouncing off the cause of public and build, it's kind of like a...
So, you know, go to Fred Kavins and go by your house.
Mike, I own the driveway.
I think, I do think it's a two-pronged thing there, yeah. I think it's, I think it's trying to figure out ways to address this specific issue, with, I think it's going to be very hard to address bass and things like that, you know.
Oh, you mean just come up with, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, but you're not suggesting that we go ahead and pass this before the lights are going?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying...
Well, my, okay.
I think we can, I think for the decibels, I think it's going to be hard to find the expert that says, you know, the absolute perfect level is 60 decibels. I think what we're going to do is probably, you know, look at a couple more law, I know you've already looked at a bunch of laws, but look at some laws, come up with kind of what the, you know, the average is there.
Okay.
Put those in for this. And, you know, this is great when I'm bothering Connie, you know, like, I think this is, this is going to be really valuable for that.
Don't take these to the Hudson Loft.
So I would think, so I think it's a two-pronged thing. I think we got to try to be right away and do what it says and work with you to, you know, fix, you know, to keep trying to deaden sound as much as we can, see if it's working, and, you know, keep on with this as well. It has to be a law, right? If not, I just don't know if we're going to, I don't know if we're going to address this with only the law and still get, you know, the basis of things in there again, because things are...
If you get, if there's an understanding that this is a problem and it's addressed...
We're not saying, we're not saying it's not a problem. We want, we want to address this as well.
No, I mean, if you address that, it won't be a problem.
We appreciate the time and the open dialogue, and that's probably the most important thing. It's a shame that they got violations and the police were out there, but it opened up the topic, it allowed us to take a look at your law, and now it's created a dialogue. So that's...
Just one last comment. Because the Hudson Loft is asking for the statute to reflect 11:00 PM and not 10:00 PM. I think if it were up to us, we'd say earlier than 10:00 PM, certainly not later. We have young children, new babies, 11:00 PM is a really...
I think that's why 10:00 PM, Mark, yeah.
My kids have been sleeping in earmuffs. They keep their earmuffs by their beds for when Hudson Loft is having a party. We worked through the crying phase and now we've gone to earmuffs. I don't think that's reasonable.
So, yeah, as I said, we're going to come out and listen, and I've been there a couple times. Hopefully it's improving and we'll continue to improve it and, you know, everybody can sleep or be awake, listen to music, whatever they prefer.
We win, but at least everybody should feel it.
No, who's lose?
But thank you all for your input and, you know, continuing to let us know when, you know, Kevin, I know you have my number, so I'll be there. Tell me, let me know if I can have a schedule.
Yeah, I'll pull one together by this week.
Great. Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Melvin. Good to see you, Mr. Thomas.
You all look great.
I will leave the motion to adjourn to executive session regarding two persons on the air.